I think you need to wait for Elizabeth.
A call to order the Planning Commission meeting of September 23rd. Please mute yourselves and then we'll read along or join along for the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Statement of Values.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people, with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
All right. Secretary, yeah, it was the Statement of Values. Please read the role, Elizabeth. Everyone can sit themselves again.
Commissioner Akasey? Commissioner Jane?
Here, sorry.
Chair Salameh?
Here.
Commissioner Becker?
Here.
Commissioner Biagini?
Here.
Commissioner Cherakuru?
Here.
Commissioner Hero?
Here.
Thank you.
Is there any news as to whether Commissioner Akasey was going to be here or absent today?
This is Gloria, the staff liaison, Chair Salameh. We have not heard anything. Oh, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
So Elizabeth maybe has more?
I'm sorry, we did receive some notice from Commissioner Akasey that she is in a meeting right now. It's taken a little longer than expected. She should be joining shortly.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth.
So we can skip the process of excusing her and let her arrive when she can. Okay, so let's go through the Declaration of Commission Procedures, I believe is next. Commissioner Cherakuru, can you please read them? Careful if you're not on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'll start again. Public hearings are conducted by the chair in accordance with the following procedures. The chair of the commission directs all activity during the hearing. All comments shall be addressed to the commission. Any item on this agenda may be continued to a subsequent hearing. Applicants will be allotted up to 10 minutes to present and justify proposals. A, following staff presentation of the item, other speakers will be given up to two minutes. The app— there's background noise. The applicant— I apologize for my dog here. The applicant is allotted up to five minutes for the rebuttal of comments. No additional comments will be accepted upon the close of the public hearing. Although, the commission reserves the right to direct questions to any speaker on any matter. Special procedures, time limits, may be applied to any item as prescribed by the chair. Appeal of commission actions must be filed in writing within seven calendar days. That ends the Declaration of Procedures, Chair.
Okay, so let's talk about the current agenda. All right, so copies of the current agenda and staff reports for each of the items on the agenda are available from the Planning Division office on the Friday afternoon preceding the meeting and available online. A copy of the agenda packet is located on the table near the entrance to the Council Chamber. If anyone was there, they could point at it. And for continuances and exceptions, this part of the meeting allows for applicants, members in the public, members of the public, or other interested parties to request an item be continued without hearing, or withdrawn, or taken out of order. Are there any requests from applicants, the public, or the commission for a continuance or exception for any of the items on tonight's agenda?
No, Chair Salameh, no, darn it.
Okay. So nobody wants to pull anything for conversation? Okay, we're gonna assume not. Planning Commission has seven members. Whenever the full commission is not present, applicants have the option to continue their item to another meeting. Okay. So consent calendar. We'll now move to the consent calendar. Hopefully Commissioner Akasey will join us before too much longer, but I think that we have a majority at this point for consent. The procedure for the consent calendar is as follows. Consent calendar items may be enacted, approved, or adopted by one motion unless requested to be removed by anyone for discussion or explanation. If any member of the Planning Commission staff, applicant, or member of the public wishes to comment on a consent calendar item, or would like the item to be heard on the regular agenda, make the request now. Items listed on the consent calendar with associated file numbers constitute public hearing items. So Secretary Cherakuru, could you please read the two items for tonight's consent calendar?
Yes, Chair. Item 1A, Planning Commission meeting minutes of April 22, 2020, meeting. And 2B, Planning Commission 2021 calendar of meetings.
Okay. I noticed in our cheat sheet here that we have two separate entries for the procedure for the consent calendar, so I guess I can skip the second one. Is there any motion to approve the consent calendar?
2B.
Second.
Okay, this is a reminder, we can hope that when people make a motion, state your name and the motion and the second and the name.
Chair, Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I had my hand up.
I see a hand, yes. Oh, you want to speak? Okay, good, fine. Please go ahead, Commissioner Jane.
I would like to pull item 1B, please.
Okay, there is no 1B, it's 2B.
Item 1—
We're on consent calendar.
No, there is 1B.
Yeah.
It's the calendar of meetings for 2021.
Okay, because I guess it's just numbered wrong in the notes. All right, so the calendar. We'll pull that and talk about it. So how about a motion on the minutes?
I would like to move to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Biagini will second.
Thank you. Elizabeth will call the vote.
Okay, this is to approve item 1A, the meeting minutes. Commissioner Akasey? Commissioner Jane?
Yes.
Chair Salameh?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Biagini?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherakuru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hero?
I'd like to move to refuse myself from the vote, please.
He wasn't here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The motion passes, thank you.
Okay, so we're through the motion passing and we can move on to conversation about the calendar of meetings. And I believe since Commissioner Jane was the primary interested party in chatting about that, I'll let him go ahead and make his comments.
Yes, so when I first joined the Planning Commission, meetings were twice a month. And now we have 13 meetings for the next fiscal year. And I'm curious as to whether those meetings will include study session meetings, or whether they were just—that's—we have less business than we used to because a lot of stuff has been moved to administrative and is not with the Planning Commission anymore. But I'm just trying to understand why we're down to one a month.
Commissioner Jane, this is the staff liaison, Gloria Shara. And I know that our planning manager has additional content for you, but let me just explain that we did provide a staff report, I believe it might have been last year, that accounted for the number of meetings that were scheduled and the number of meetings that were canceled. And it seemed about 14 were about average, since we did have a number of cancellations. And so there will be additional study session meetings in addition to this that Planning Manager Brio can elaborate on. But right now, given the COVID situation and the coordination for our agendas, the two-week difference is really isn't efficient for us at this time and with reduced resources. So we will still schedule study sessions as needed in addition to this number. But Ms. Brio, do you have additional comments?
Thank you, Ms. Shara. So I just want to—yes, we did do an analysis last year and before we made the switch from, I think it was 22 to 14. And the analysis was over the last couple of years just showing the number of meetings that had been canceled related to, you know, ebbs and flows of when work is ready. And that's the primary reason for the calendar being what's proposed. We do try whenever possible because scheduling the number of you as well as staff, you know, is time-consuming and providing another meeting is time-consuming and resource-consuming. So we try to add the study sessions on whenever we can, if we have an agenda that would allow for that. We will schedule additional meetings. And you all have been very helpful this past year when we've had to do that for some time-sensitive projects, like the related development area plans that have moved forward this past year. So in those situations where, you know, the cadence of once a month is not sufficient, we will reach out to you for those time-critical issues as well as if we think that the schedule or the agenda doesn't really allow us to have at least an hour and a half of discussion on study sessions. So what you'll find is that our next Planning Commission meeting, which I was going to share with you later on in the agenda, we are going to bring back the Climate Action Plan for Study Session Number Two because I think many of you provided, you know, feedback that you didn't feel like that was sufficient time to, you know, really digest as well as provide comment on the Climate Action Plan, given the number of public speakers and the longer staff presentation. So we're going to do that—I know that's sort of a fresh memory you all have. So we're going to be coming back in October with a second study session on that. But just some context, I think we're very appreciative to have fewer scheduled meetings, realizing that we may reach out to you for some additional meetings if the cadence of the work kind of requests that, or if we need to, to provide more time for study sessions.
Did you have more to add, Commissioner Jane?
Yeah, I was just saying that it seems to me that it would be easier to schedule two a month and then cancel them as needed. That way I could put them in my calendar and not have to have Elizabeth coordinate a special meeting to happen. But I don't know what the logistics of doing that are.
Okay, well, I'm the other one with the hand up at this point. Let me chime in too, that fewer meetings makes sense, I'm sure, for staff and logistics. But I think what you're going to discover is that fewer meetings means clumping together larger projects and larger discussions. And I've heard a great deal of pushback from staff that the number of hours spent in the meeting and the overtime and all the other issues is substantial. I suspect that more short meetings would be more use—good use of people's times than fewer really long meetings. Personally, I don't enjoy five- and six-hour-plus meetings. And if we have large projects, we will be in the situation of having extremely long conversations and long meetings. So I kind of agree with Commissioner Jane that it would be better if we could have more short meetings rather than fewer really long meetings.
Just—this is Rena Brio, just to chime in. There is quite a considerable amount of staff time to produce agendas, to just have a meeting and have staff present at meetings. That is actually, in and of itself, a significant amount of time. So the number of meetings we have does definitely add, even if, you know, maybe a meeting's a little bit longer, certainly longer, because we have fewer of them. The more of them we have, even if they were fewer, would certainly add significant time.
Okay, well, as a member of—the—I mean, let me add that as a member of the commission, then I can't abide having it both ways, where if we're going to have fewer meetings, I don't want to hear complaints about how long they go. Because I think what we're going to wind up with is long meetings, whether it's planned that way or not. And if people are continuously objecting to the fact of really long meetings, that's counterproductive to us getting the job done. So hopefully we can find a good balance of the two. All right?
Okay, so is there a motion then to adopt the calendar?
Chair, I had my hand up.
Okay. Commissioner Cherakuru?
Sorry, just wanted to also pitch in. In the current budget circumstances, I think staff and city is also looking to reduce the cost associated with running these public meetings. So I hear both Chair and Commissioner Jane concerned. My only other thought is if we have these study sessions, which we are going to see a lot more—I know staff has been trying to put them along with the agenda, but an hour doesn't seem to be cutting it for, you know, workshop sessions or study sessions that have an extensive involvement, both from the commission and members of the public. So if you are going to reduce or, you know, yeah, like to longer meetings, at least to consider study sessions to be at least one and a half hours. It's going to be longer, but—or make them separate. So that's an option, too. If you're having a list of workshop items that you know, maybe we have them on the calendar as well.
Chair Salameh, I don't see how I can raise my hand, but I'm raising my hand.
I saw that, too.
So, yeah, it's under Participants in the bottom right corner. But if you can see that. Yeah, go ahead, Vice Chair.
One thing I did want to bring up, so I'm kind of glad this got pulled, thank you, Sid. I just noticed March 24th to March 26th, 2021, is the next League of Cities Planning Commissioners Academy in Garden Grove, which, you know, I'm going to want to go to again because it's not a one-shot deal and I think it's very valuable. So that would conflict with the March 24th meeting. I just want to give you that heads up right now, because—
Commissioner Biagini, just—this is Gloria. So when you're speaking, a lot of it's getting muffled, so we can't understand what you're saying. So if you could speak directly into your voice piece, because we can't catch the content of what your reference was for that March 24th date.
All right, is this any better?
Yes, that's much better.
Okay, the next League of Cities Planning Commissioners Academy is March 24th through the 26th in Garden Grove for 2021. That would conflict with our March 24th Planning Commission meeting. I want to raise that now because I thought it was very valuable and we'll have a conflict.
Is that going to be a virtual meeting or an in-person meeting?
Who knows at this point? Odds are it will be virtual, but even if it's virtual, there's a potential for conflict.
Okay. So again, if we had a quorum, we can continue that meeting. But if we know that there's going to be multiple participants where we don't have a quorum, we can schedule that—we still have time to reschedule that meeting date.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Alternatively, we can look and see whether the council chambers are available on a different date near that, so to avoid those hearing dates. So we'll check into that.
Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, this is Rena Brio, though. I do believe we have to move a calendar forward today in order to make it into the, you know, the physical calendar that gets sent to all residents in Santa Clara. So I think we have to move forward a calendar today. And if the 24th doesn't work, we can look at the 17th or 31st as alternative dates. In terms of—if the City Council Chamber is available on the 17th or 31st, unless one of you has an objection to either of those two alternatives, then we can explore those two alternatives.
Yes, if you'd like to give staff authorization to substitute that date if there's a majority in agreement with the commission?
Yeah, as long as we're flexible, I think everybody'd be fine.
Okay. All right, we'll look into that before forwarding the meeting—the calendars to the council.
Okay, so do we have a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Excuse me, I had my hand up.
Boy, it keeps popping up in the—all right, I see it now. Go ahead, Commissioner Jane.
Okay. I was going to make a motion, but I think Commissioner Biagini had a motion, so I guess I'll—
You can second it.
Okay, or I can make my motion.
You make it and I'll second it, how's that?
All right. I move to approve this schedule of meetings with the advice that the March 24th meeting be adjusted to avoid the League of Cities meeting.
Second, by Biagini.
Okay, I guess we can take that to move forward with a vote. I don't see any other hands this time.
Okay, we're getting ready to take the vote. This is to approve the meeting calendar with the addition of moving the March 24th meeting due to the conflict with the League of California Cities. Commissioner Akasey? Commissioner Jane?
Yes.
Chair Salameh?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Biagini?
Yes.
Commissioner Cherakuru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hero?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes, thank you.
Okay, so since the motion passed, we can move on to public presentations. I'll wait for it to show up on the screen, it seems quite delayed tonight. There it is. Okay, so public presentations. Elizabeth, are there any members of the public that would like to briefly address the commission on any item not on the agenda?
Yes, we have one public comment.
Okay.
And that person is actually in the Zoom meeting, so possibly they could read their comment instead of having me do so.
Majgan Mazade, if you'd like to speak, you have been unmuted.
The comment is from Majgan, M-O-J-G-A-N. And I'm sorry, the last name starts with an M, I don't have the rest. The comment reads, "I am urging you all to adapt Option 3 for the climate goal. It is very urgent that city moves forward with more aggressive and bold targets. Climate crisis is an extremely urgent matter and we are running out of time. There are also a lot of room for greening the city and planting more trees throughout the city and removing the pavement. Santa Clara residents understand the severity of the crisis and are behind aggressive measure."
Okay, thank you. When we have that conversation for that presentation again, I think those—we can, you know, bring this item back to a public presentation level and have that read again. Okay, so we're—uh, is there any other conversation on that before we move on? I see a hand from Commissioner Jane again. Go ahead. You're muted.
Uh, do we—sorry, this is for Xander. Do we need to excuse Commissioner Akasey before this item or before the end of the meeting?
Before the end of the meeting, Commissioner.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I was really hoping she'd be able to make it by this point. Okay, is there anything else you wanted to say, Commissioner Jane?
No, that was it.
Okay.
I would like to add Commissioner Akasey has been in touch. She is still in her other meeting and she's hoping to join as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, we can—uh, I don't know, is that getting started on the public hearing issues is kind of difficult in the sense that without her participation, she would actually automatically have to recuse herself by not hearing the presentation, I believe. So do—we want to take just a few-minute recess to give her a little bit of a chance to get here and then come back and tackle the public hearing, since that's the only other item today?
As your staff liaison, I would not advise that if Commissioner Akasey wants to join that meeting. But we have this scheduled and as long as she's familiar with all the material and perhaps can ask questions, but we should proceed.
All right, that's fine, if we can feel comfortable with that. Please go ahead and describe the public hearing item number two and we will go forward. Oh, I can read the title. "Action on Appeal of a Zoning Administrator Denial of a Minor Modification for the Property at 2133 Santa Cruz Avenue." So I assume staff has the presentation.
So Rebecca Bustos will be making this presentation, she's the project manager.
Hi, this is Rebecca. I'm unable to share my screen right now because someone else is sharing so I can do the presentation.
Yes, Santa Cruz.
Can I share my screen or should I just tell you when to move forward?
Derek is getting the screen ready, I believe.
Okay, we're seeing a slide now.
Okay, great. So I'm Rebecca. I'm the planner who is overseeing this application. So this is, as you stated, a zoning administrator modification for the property at 2133 Santa Cruz Avenue. Next slide, please.
All right, so just for the commission's information, there's a slight delay between the presentation and the movement of the presentation itself, so you'll have to just get, wait, have a pause in between the slides.
So the applicant requested a zoning administrator modification for an encroachment into the required 20-foot setback. This is in association with a proposed 427-square-foot addition to the existing residence that would occur on the rear and side of that home, and they are requesting to encroach into that 20-foot setback. Next slide.
Rebecca, could you wait just a moment? I think there...
Hi, we just are, we're having some technical difficulties that we can, we think can be solved by a three-minute to four-minute break. Chair Salim, do you mind? I'm sorry, I think this will allow Rebecca's presentation to go more smoothly. Chair Salim, do you mind, you know, making a motion for a five-minute break?
Yeah, I think that was a good idea. We could have done that anyway. Let's do a five-minute break, please.
Sounds good.
The meeting... I've started the meeting. We're ready to start the meeting. Rebecca Bustos, if you're ready to start your presentation.
Okay, we'll do. So I'm just going to reiterate what I previously said about what the details of the request. So this is a zoning administrator minor modification that the applicant requested in conjunction with a 427-square-foot addition at the rear and side of the house. The request is to encroach into the required 20-foot rear setback. The development or the zoning administrator did deny that request, and so before the Planning Commission this evening is the appeal. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, I'd like to announce that Commissioner Casey has joined the meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. So the project site is located at 2133 Santa Cruz Avenue, which is on the east side of Santa Cruz Avenue. The lot itself is a little over 5,000 square feet. It's 5,062 square feet, and the lot has a 52-foot width. The existing house is about 1,100 square feet with a 410-square-foot garage. Next slide, please. So this is the existing house. The existing house, you can see on the right-hand side of the presentation, the rear setback is 17 feet 4 inches, and the house, like I said, is about 1,104 square feet. So the applicant is proposing to match the existing rear setback of 17 feet 4 inches as part of the addition to the residence, which you'll see on the next slide. Next slide, please. So this is the addition that is proposed. It's 427 square feet, and as you can see on the upper right-hand corner, there's a proposed encroachment into the 17-foot or into the required 20-foot setback at a length of 17 feet 4 inches. Next slide, please. This is just a close-up. So the area of encroachment is, would be approximately eight square feet into that rear setback. So it's basically the corner of the house on the proposed master bedroom. Next slide, please. This is just a perspective of how the rear of the house would look with the proposed encroachment, so otherwise there would be a notch out of that room. Next slide, please. So the zoning administrator did deny the minor modification request due to inability to make the findings, which are the variance findings listed in section 18.108.040. The key finding being that there are unusual conditions applying to the land or building because the lot is rectangular in shape and is one of many lots of this size in the neighborhood, and the applicants could, you know, make an addition to the residence within the required setback area, and for that reason, the request was denied. Next slide, please. So based on that, staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to deny the minor modification. The applicant is present and does have a presentation they would like to make as well.
So are there any questions for staff or would the commission prefer to move on to the applicant's presentation?
I see four hands raised.
Okay. So while we're bringing up this next presentation, do each, whoever has their hand up, I can't see from here, but do you want to just start with the questions?
Yeah, we'll do that. I have no idea who raised their hand first, but we'll just go down the order of the list. So Commissioner Chiracuru first.
Thank you, Chair. I did raise first. So I had a question on the new zoning ordinance amendments. Is there a clause in that that existing and or non-conforming can add up to a certain threshold within, even if it's basically to align with the non-conforming part? I hope I'm phrasing the question right for staff. Gloria, you might know what I'm referring to.
Correct. No, that provision is not currently proposed. Under our current non-conforming ordinance, it only allows expansion to any conforming manner. We will still have the minor modification provision, but it, right now, it's in flux what exactly that would be. I did rewrite that ordinance, but there's been back and forth on how to proceed with that. So there's no definitive, yeah, response that we can tell you this is absolutely something we recommend or is pending.
Got it. Thank you, Gloria. That's all. I yield, Chair.
All right, Commissioner Akezi.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry, I was stuck in that work meeting. So my, I want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So the only reason this was, this variance request was triggered was because the setback had always been at 17.5 square, I mean, 5 feet, and but just because they're doing the addition, the, that, that 17.5 that has always been there no longer, no longer meets the 20-foot setback, so therefore they're here. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. As I was saying, the, the structure itself is legal non-conforming in that it does not meet our current standard of 20-foot rear setback.
Right, and neighbors didn't complain that, oh, you know, this, this place, this is shorter than 20, but, I mean, it's not like neighbors complained or anything.
Correct.
Okay, thanks a lot. That's it.
You might want to mention that there were neighbors that submitted mail that they actually supported it after we got our packet.
Thank you.
Yes, there's additional correspondence. I believe it's two different emails, but it's from the same person, Mr. Henry Kate. So one had commentary and questions, the other one was expression of support.
Okay, Commissioner Jane?
Yes, I guess my concern is that, you know, this, the bulk of this house is at 17 and 1/2 feet, and that now they're just doing an addition that's going to keep it in line with that 17 and 1/2 feet, and it's not like it's going to impact anyone's privacy. Now, I just wanted to understand if this applicant wanted to put an ADU in the backyard, the setback, side and rear setbacks would be 4 feet. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Biagini?
I believe my questions were answered, but Gloria, let me just make sure I'm crystal clear on this. In order for it to pass, they would have to cut out a part of that addition. Am I correct? So that that piece was in compliance with the current zoning of, I think it's 20 feet?
Yes, the current setback under the zoning code is 20 feet, so any expansion would have to meet that, that perpendicular setback of 20 feet across the entire backyard area.
Okay, and no neighbors complained? That's been answered. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hero?
Yeah, just like to add that during the original construction, I believe that the setback was, was approved at 17 foot 5 inches. Am I correct? And...
That is correct. The structures were built before our current zoning ordinance was in effect.
Okay, so what they're asking for is a variance on a 2 and 1/2-foot notch out of their addition, which, which really, I mean, it seems minimal to me, and I don't think that they're actually encroaching on anybody by keeping the same line on the rear of their property or on the rear of their structure as opposed to the property line. I think that the, the fact that they were denied the variance is, is kind of ridiculous, and that's just my opinion, but that's, that's what I think.
So, yeah. If you would like us to explain the variance process to understand the decision, I could certainly do that.
Oh, that would be fine. I, I understand the, the method of thinking along those lines, and, and I understand that there's 20-foot setback requirement. I get that. But in these circumstances, I think that, that it's a little over the top as far as the denial of their variance. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, and just a couple of comments from staff. So essentially, the zoning code is a, basically a legal document that we, it's a codified regulation, so the staff doesn't have any ability to vary from that. Essentially, it says a modification shall make the same findings as a variance, which is that there are four conditions that have, four situations or stipulations that have to be met, and if we can't make those, then the staff does not have the authority to grant a minor modification. So because we're unable to make the findings, all four of them, it's not one or two or three, it means all four, then we have no authority to grant the modification, and it has to come forward as a variance where those same questions are before the Planning Commission. So, so I just, again, we don't see any, anything unusual about the lot since there's 37 other homes with the same situation. So in this case, an exemption would be a special privilege that's enjoyed by this property, but if the commission wants to approve that, they can. Now, the second part of this is our discussion is if the commission feels that the modification process should be relaxed for our upcoming code, that would certainly help us if you indicated that so we can continue to work on that part of the zoning code update.
I understand. So would it, would it be in order to make a motion along those lines?
I would keep them separate since we're not discussing the zoning code update, but just as a discussion item or referral back to staff as, apart from this, but just as, this could be an example of why you feel, if that's the consensus of the commission, that there should be some relaxation to the code in the future.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, actually, I'm the one with the next, one with the hand up. Yeah, I can see exactly what's going on. I went to Google Maps and did the 3D and looked at what's, the entire row of houses are all at seventeen feet five and they're all wide. And it makes complete sense that this expansion would go out and not need to be notched. There, perhaps there needs to be something in the code that allows for consistency with existing surrounding neighborhood structures to circumvent the override of the twenty foot setback to be consistent with both itself and the neighbors. I would highly support the appeal for that situation. Let's proceed to Commissioner Akesi again, if you have something additional.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to lower my hand, but if you allow me to.
Okay.
Yeah, let's include this in the minutes and make, let's make sure that, you know, it's included in the minute when we review the minutes. Thank you.
That makes good sense. Commissioner Jane again?
Yeah, a couple of things. The first is, doesn't the planning director have a fifteen percent discretion? In which case fifteen percent of twenty feet is three feet?
Yes, it's actually twenty-five percent either to reduce or increase a development standard. So, there, there could be that variation. However, it's required that the findings for a variance have to be met in order to grant that modification.
I'm still confused. But the planning director cannot make that finding?
Correct.
For the variance themselves or herself?
Correct.
Meaning that every time that that, then I don't understand when the planning director even has the chance to do that. Because every, every time it would have to come to the planning commission for any variance. And when does the twenty-five percent ever kick in? I'm confused.
So, Commissioner Jane, this is Rena Brio. I mean, you do raise a good point because the minor modification findings are the same as the variance findings. And the variances are intended to be very unusual situations. What we found is, you know, there's a lot of interest to want to support people on smaller deviations from the code. And so, as part of the zoning code update, we have the opportunity to kind of modify those findings so that they're not word for word what the variance findings are, where there's a very high threshold for making those findings. But that's something we're still exploring, so our code doesn't reflect that, that, so the minor modifications, variations within twenty-five percent of the code still have to obtain those, you know, pretty high bar standards of being very unusual lots, you know, for why a, this lot in particular is particularly unusual and should not meet the standards, you know, development standards.
Okay, the second question that I have is that if we were going to agendize, I mean, if we were to discuss zoning code updates, that would have to be agendized, and I don't think we're allowed under Brown Act to even talk about that.
Yes, it would have to be agendized.
I agree.
Okay. So, we can only vote on the appeal. We can't actually discuss zoning code. Is that correct?
Technically, you're not supposed to discuss zoning code, however, in the context of this property, we have already noted your concerns about minor modifications. So, when we do bring back the zoning code update, we will be sure to look at that specifically.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, the only part, final comment I might make is that this is a case where the lot is extraordinarily not unusual. This is a lot that matches all the other lots and the expansion that they're looking for is completely consistent with all the surrounding neighbors, which kind of goes opposite of what you're suggesting, that there's something extremely unusual about the lot. It's actually extremely usual. Yeah, that reverse case is something that we should definitely talk about in the future so that we don't create oddball situations by being too rigid on our code. Okay. I think the next step is to have the presentation. I don't see any other hands, so I suspect the next step is the presentation by the applicant.
Okay. Steph, are we ready for the applicant's presentation to proceed? Ready? Okay. All right.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Can you, can you guys meet?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Do you have the presentation up?
Yes, it's up.
Okay. Oh, perfect. Thank you, guys, for, for taking the time to listen to us and, and, you know, it's been good to hear the discussion as well. As we've been talking about, this is around our home, two one three three Sandy and Cruz Avenue. Myself, my husband, and our daughter live here. So, if we go to the next slide, just as that pulls up really quickly, you know, we moved in about seven years ago and have really been enjoying the house. It's been a, a great place for us to, to live and to grow our family in. I think there's a little bit of a delay in the slide. Here we go. Yep. So, it's been a great place where we've really been able to, to live and grow our family. Go to the next slide then.
Hello, just to let you know, there is about a ten second delay for each slide.
Okay. Yeah, and maybe we jump forward then to slide six if there's such a delay. I think, you know, and I can kind of talk to some of this stuff as we move forward just, you know, in respect of the, of the team's time. When we looked at what we wanted to do and extend our house so that it could continue to grow with our family, there's some things that we absolutely love about the house and want to make sure we can keep. So, the quaint front yard with the beautiful tree, as you can see, is something that we really honed in on. We, for instance, didn't want to move the driveway because we wanted to keep the tree. The single-story home that fits within the neighborhood, as well as the beautiful roses that we have in our backyard that we, we really enjoy every day. As we looked at designing the front of the house, we tried to stay in, in alignment with the general look and feel of A, the existing house, and B, the neighborhood. So, when you look at what it looks like today versus tomorrow, it's, it's very, very similar here, you can see. As we went through the insides of the house, we keep moving forward, you know, we had originally thought about putting a larger addition, but reduced it to the smaller one as it fit the neighborhood a little bit better. And we have gone through about ten plus iterations on our design to both maximize the square footage that we're adding, as well as to be able to continue to enjoy the things that we really love about our current house. This home is still in the correct percentage threshold as designated by the commissioner and kind of proportionate of, of lot per house size. So, we are keeping within those, those boundaries as well. If you go to the next slide, our current plans allow for not only an extra bedroom for our growing family, but what was really most important and some of the reasons why we iterated so frequently on the design is because we really wanted to be able to view and see the, our backyard and the rose, beautiful roses we have in the backyard. So, you know, right now with the window placement, we're able to see that not only from our bedroom, but from our bathroom, which is something we really wanted to enjoy on an everyday basis. And as mentioned, right, the addition keeps in line with the existing setbacks in our neighboring yards. So, we're, we're staying consistent with the other properties in the house and, and not looking to encroach into, you know, or beyond what, what's currently there in place. And that drives a consistent look and feel across the, across the neighborhood. So, on the next slide, it just talks about the issues, right? I think Rebecca mentioned the circular thing. You can see here, all of the other houses have the same, same setback as ours currently, the seventeen feet four inches, which, as we all talked about, right, is, is less than the twenty feet required. We're simply asking that we not change the rear setback, we just conform to the existing setback. And this actually would look more out of place if we created a notch than, than it currently does, as we're really just looking to conform with existing. It would kind of look like a small bite had been taken out of the, out of the back corner. And then the, this again, we, you know, we're arguing that a, a grant to the variance would not consistent, constitute of a grant of special privilege, privilege, excuse me, because the rear setback is not being changed. It's going to be consistent with prevailing patterns found on the street as we'd, as we, as we had discussed before. If we go to the, yeah, the, the last one, so the eight square foot carve out, so if we had to actually notch it, we would have to kind of create an eight square foot carve out, which would just actually look kind of less like the rest of the neighborhood. We'd lose the ability to actually enjoy our backyard and we'd have to reconfigure our back master suite, which we spent so much time organizing and configuring, as I mentioned with the design before. So, I think that, that concludes our, our statement. Devin?
Just want to add briefly, I, I just thought it was kind of odd, like on the denial, it said unusual conditions applied to the lot, but then under the zoning ordinance, it says they could grant if special circumstances exist. And, you know, unusual conditions and special circumstances kind of sounded synonymous, so it seemed that they were granting for the, or denying for the same reason that they could grant the variance. That's all I have.
Well, yeah, appreciate your guys' time and, and the commissioner's time to hear our, our plea and, and hope that we can come to a quick conclusion. That was it. Thank you. Any other questions?
I see a hand up for Commissioner Chiracurro.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Nicole. You did, I think, follow your gut instinct in applying for the appeal. I did have a clarification in your justification letter. You said that you already received an approval for a two-story addition, expansion?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, if, going back to all our reasons for justifying, I think the eight foot square foot notch is better for the neighborhood and still remains in context than a second story addition, which I'm not saying is bad, but just in alignment with all the prior comments that, you know, this is a much better proposal that we have than the all option, which would have been a two-story addition that met setback, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Chair. I yield.
Any other commissioners' questions? No, then I, is there any public, wait, is there any other public comment or conversation around this issue? I assume none. Then I think we can move to close public hearing.
Move public hearing. Create a crew.
Second, Biagini.
Thank you.
The motion is to close public hearing. Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jane?
Yes.
Chair Salameh?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Biagini?
Oops, sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Chiracurro?
Yes.
Commissioner Hero?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay. I see two entries for Commissioner Chiracurro in the list. It seems odd. Somebody might want to look at that.
No, I did, because the new iPad does not have the ability to raise hand like Commissioner was. So, I actually went back to my other Zoom app, so that's why you see this. But I'm using this for the voice. I would like to move with the deliberation, but I'll let the, the Chair determine that next.
Yeah, we have a couple other commissioners that had comments now that we're, public hearing is closed. Commissioner Becker?
Thank you, Chair. I, I personally don't see any issue with this. I mean, I love the style of these houses. I love these neighborhoods. It reminds me of the Back to the Future Houses, to be honest. Have you all seen that movie? I, I do like, though, that you guys are putting the front door in a new place. I think it's a little more inviting than where it is currently, I think. But getting to the property owner issue, you know, as a renter, I wish I had the, had a property right to, to be able to do this little eight foot thing, and that's why I do support you guys on this. And I believe it's going to increase your quality of life. And I've seen houses with these same kind of, what they call a bite. It's just that's the way you want to have your property, that's the way you should have your property. So, I support.
Okay. Commissioner Jane, actually, and then we'll go to Biagini.
I am ready to move to sustain the appeal.
Commissioner Biagini, did you have anything?
I second.
There we go. I just wanted to, first off, thank the applicant. That was a really clear, good PowerPoint on the situation with your home. My opinion on this is that I understand that staff can only do what they can do. But in this case, what I see is the applicant has gone out of their way to make sure they stay within the flavor of the neighborhood. I think they've done a great job. And I think taking a bite out of the rear of their house really doesn't, is just, I don't like them having to do that. I think they have done an admirable job, and I would absolutely support the motions that I think have already been made here, that uphold the appeal and deny the zoning administrator's decision.
Okay. So, I've heard a motion and a second, and I think that was everybody had their hand up. Elizabeth, do you, I think we're at a point we can call the vote?
Well, Mr. Chair, sorry, I need to complicate things. May I?
Okay.
May I, may I make your life more difficult?
Sure. You, you want us to, to qualify all the issues to justify it, right?
That's right. Your two options are, one, we can bring this back with a resolution to sustain the appeal and overturn the zoning administrator's decision that actually makes all the findings for you. Or, two, you can simply take the action tonight and make the findings you need to make on the spot. But if, if you'd like, I can help guide you through those four findings.
I think we'll succeed much better if you did, because I, I was having a challenge to try and understand which of the findings in which order we could attack. If you want to go ahead and list them and, and offer advice, I think we could all appreciate it.
Well, the first finding is that there are unusual conditions applying to the land or building, which do not apply generally in the same district. Our, our variance findings are a little more permissive than state law, because we look at not just the land, but also the building. So, I might suggest that here you've got a building that was legally constructed at a seventeen and a half foot setback, and the expansion would be consisting, consistent with that existing setback. So, simply citing to the fact that the building has a seventeen point five foot setback would probably be appropriate, but.
Now, I, I'd like to see that in a wording that is not ambiguous so that the issue isn't recycled back again. I, I can see where it is, in effort to be consistent with the neighborhood and the original home, that the variance be allowed and the notch not be required is a way to try and, that's our ultimate objective, is to find a way to make it so that that notch is not maintaining the consistent look and feel of the neighborhood and the home itself. So.
And I think when you get to the final finding, which is that the granting of, of this approval would be in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
That's where we can talk about the character of the neighborhood and encouraging compatible buildings. So, the fact that this would be compatible with the neighborhood would be great for the fourth finding we're making. But for this first one, the unusual conditions applying to the land or building, all I've got is that the setback is seventeen point five feet, although it's not that unusual for the. for this district, unfortunately.
Yeah.
But for the zoning overall, it is unusual.
Okay. Um, yeah, uh, wording that is the tricky part. I, I think to avoid, uh, violating the existing home setback, it would be unusually, uh, a pre- well, it's an unusual requirement to ask for a, a, a section of this home to actually be set back further than the existing home, which seems to fit the issue of being consistent with the, the whole neighborhood. But that's the fourth item, so I, for the first item, i- isn't there a way to, to state it, that the home itself would remain consistent? It's un- it's unexpected and unusual for this property to be notched, uh, only because it would generate an, an inconsistent home, uh, layout? Is that...
So, so the existing design of the home, um, requires that the addition be consistent with the setback. If you were to adhere strictly to the zoning ordinance, it would create something incompatible.
Yes.
So, um, so the, the...
Can I take a s...
Take a stab at it.
Okay. So, so in general, these variances are where you're extending the, the line further into the setback area? We're not extending the line further into the setback area. So it's unusual with respect to most of the cases that we see.
We're kind of saying the obvious, but we're trying to put it into a term that Xander and I can be happy with.
Usually, usually when I see these variances, they're actually trying to move the line closer to the fence.
Yeah, if they were shooting for a sixteen...
We're not, we're not moving the line closer. Yeah.
If they were shooting for sixteen feet, then this issue would be a completely different problem. But at seventeen and a half, which there's already that level of encroachment, imposing a new rule on top of the current structure seems egregious.
Um, Attorney Abby, can you please restate the finding for the commission? I think, uh, if you rephrased it or just re- reiterated it, they would understand that you're assisting them with that standard.
Yeah.
Let me start it again. There are unusual conditions applying to the land or building, which do not apply generally in the same district. Um, and what I have so far is in that the building was legally constructed at a seventeen point five foot setback, and the expansion would simply extend the existing setback without further reducing the setback area.
Can we get that into wording into the motion?
Yes, we will put it into the, oh, I'm sorry. Elizabeth, d- do you have enough information from Xander to include that in the motion? Well, I apologize, we need to make all four findings before we can, um...
Sure. I just want to incrementally do this, so that we don't forget something at the very end. All right.
Uh, Chair, I, I have my hand raised, so may I speak before we continue?
If you, if you have something on this particular issue, go ahead.
Yes. Um, so this may not be the part of the motion, but what is the best way to note in the minutes about the concern we raised about the, uh, making these minor exceptions? Uh, this is a question to, uh, the, the, our, um, counsel.
Well, we can, we can include a couple sentences in the minutes stating that the planning commission noted that the application of the minor modifications has become somewhat unwieldy and inappropriate in certain cases, and that when the, when the planning commission reviews the zoning ordinance, they ask that this be part of that.
Yeah.
So, um, I'd like to ask staff, uh, um, El- Elizabeth, can you include that in the minutes, please?
Yes, but, but let's complete the findings for the resolution first, and then we could just include that language in the minutes.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Yes, as additional direction to staff.
Okay, so let's tackle the second item.
Luckily, I think the rest of them are easier. Uh, the second one is that the granting of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights of the petition.
I think it says itself then, because for them to be able to make a, a rational and reasonable addition, we need to grant this without the notch for that space to make sense.
Okay, so, do you want to move on to the third finding then?
Yes.
The granting of the variance shall not materially adversely affect the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the applicant's property, and will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood.
Okay.
So we could just reference that it's hot, it's, the addition's on the back of the property, so it won't have any impact on adjacent neighbors or the general public.
And would be no more intrusive on the addition existence.
Yeah, and it doesn't encroach on privacy, and it doesn't, uh, reduce the fire accessibility or any other pertinent pieces of the decision, so it's very consistent.
Right, because it's a one-story in nature.
Yeah, with the existing fence.
Okay. The last finding?
The granting of the variance is in keeping with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. And I happen to know that one of the, one of the stated intents of the zoning ordinance is to protect the character and stability of residential areas and neighborhoods, and to encourage compatible uses of lands and buildings. So if either, both of those sound good to you, I'd be happy to.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I think that's completely consistent, so I, i- if we have all four issues covered, uh, and then appended to the motion, then, then we can move on to the vote, yes?
Okay, so we will amend...
Or someone could read the motion.
Right, so we will amend the resolution for, um, to, uh, support the appeal, pending the discussion that was read just now. We will formulate that. So we'll just say, uh, we don't need to enumerate all that in the motion itself, because we've already read through it. That's part of the resolution.
All right.
Well, y- y- I'm actually suggesting to be, plop, plop that all down into the minutes. Rather than draft a resolution after the planning commission acts...
Right.
I would say we, we're just going to record the vote of the planning commission and list the findings beneath that in the minutes.
Okay.
That'll be our record for this.
All right. Yes.
That'll make it visible to the public and legal.
Yeah.
And, and the last thing I would request is that since we're not adopting a resolution, we still need to make the express sequel finding, which is that this project is categorically exempt per sequel guideline fifteen three oh one existing facilities, because it's a non-sufficient and in breach of more than fifty percent of the area.
Okay, I hope others caught that. I only got about fifty percent of it.
Yeah, it broke up a little bit for me, too.
I'm sorry. I just said it's categorically exempt pursuant to sequel guideline fifteen three oh one E. It's the same sequel guideline that cited in the draft resolution, but we're not adopting the resolution, so I just want to make sure that making the sequel finding is part of your vote.
Okay. Yeah, we've had a first and a second, um, so we'll wait for the vote, and then we can comment on the, uh, related issues.
Could you please re- repeat who made the motion? Who was that?
That was Commissioner Jane, and you, Commissioner Casey seconded.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this motion is to support the appeal with four findings, and I believe you also wanted to add information about additional direction to staff, adding information in the minutes regarding the zoning code. Did you want to add that, or I heard that said earlier? Or we did, this will just...
After the, I believe that would be after this, and then we'll have a separate m- motion to talk about the zoning code, if I'm correct. Zan, I'll let our, uh, council chime in if I set it out of order again.
It, um, yeah, it's just our ability to discuss the zoning code tonight is very limited, since it's not done.
Right.
So, I mean, I think you've already put into the record the, the minutes. Um, uh, I don't, I don't know that we need any more action from you on that point after this motion.
Okay, we'll move on with the motion. We'll take a vote. Thank you. Commissioner Ikasi?
Aye.
Commissioner Jane?
Aye. I'm, sorry.
Commissioner Jane?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Biagini?
Yes.
Commissioner Chiracurro?
Yes.
Commissioner Hero? Thank you. The motion passes.
Okay, so that action is final unless there's an appeal within seven calender, calendar days.
Okay. Um, yeah, I want to thank the applicants for their patience, because, uh, they're actually helping to set some precedent. Um, thank you. Uh, so how to, what's the best way to proceed to not talk about the issue that we want to talk about?
I think you could, you could just reference that, yeah, the discussion that because of the prior discussion, public hearing item, that you'd like to give additional direction or consensus of the planning commission for considering a relaxation of the zoning code, uh, for the upcoming update related to the issuance of minor modifications.
Uh, hopefully, I think, Mr. Jane also added an interesting fact, that it would be nice if we could empower, uh, some of this to not have to come all the way to the commission, uh, for a resolution, because I think obviously something like this minor change would have been really handled at staff level. Go ahead, Commissioner Jane.
Y- yes, um, I believe that something like this, um, is a undue expense for the applicants, because the applicants had to pay a permit fee and an appeal fee to, uh, bring this up. And if this could be handled, something this minor could be handled administratively, uh, due to the twenty-five percent discretion, that would be better for our residents.
We'll include the, those comments in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I don't see any hands, but someone would probably be, uh, advised to motion on how we could proceed to officially take, uh, our conversation to the review of the, the, uh...
Well, um, actually, Mr. Chair, I, I don't think you need to take any further before we noted it for the minutes, so...
Okay, good, that's great, I'm glad. Fewer motions, fewer votes onward. Um, since that was the end of the public, uh, hearing, uh, I think, I'm scrolling down through my notes, um...
The next item is reports of commission and board liaison.
Right, reports and, right, and announcement of other items. Uh, is there anything that anyone has on other items and travel? Well, we'll get to travel after other items. Go ahead, Commissioner Ikasi.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I have, um, a, a resident, um, who lives near the, um, this is a pretty old project, but, um, you know that the apart, the, the, the site that used to be Cole at the corner of Lawrence and, um, El Camino, um, they received an entitlement to develop that land, uh, more than five years ago, and they so far built the, um, apartment, and, um, they were also supposed to build, um, retail space. Um, we were hoping that Cole might come back, and there's nothing. The whole area is senseful construction, but nothing's happening, uh, while the people are moving into the apartment complex. So the neighbor raised a concern about, um, what's going to happen to that property. Um, so, uh, I, I wanted to ask a couple of quick questions to the staff on what the ru- what the rules that are appla- that apply to, on this project.
Okay.
Uh, so this is the, um, Gateway Village Development at, uh, thirty-six ten and thirty-six forty El Camino.
Right. Uh, Commissioner Ikasi, I can respond to that. So I was the project manager for that development, and it was actually, um, there was a complicated entitlement because the property went into bankruptcy, uh, as part of, as it went through the entitlement process. So it was purchased by a different developer, Essex, um, Es- Essex Property Trust, so they developed the residential, and there was a stipulation that the original owner had to be allowed the opportunity to develop the commercial portion of it, and so that owner exercised their right. They got a, a slight change to the property, uh, design that was approved by the director of plant, director of community development. And so those permits have been issued to the, the authorization has been issued to the applicant, and now they're proceeding. Um, I don't know where they're at in the building permit process, but we could certainly check and let you know. But that's, it's fully entitled, there's no expiration, because the residential is built, so the property is vested, so they can build at any time, but we could find out the timing. Uh, I know, as far as I know, they wanted to proceed fairly quickly, so that was issued earlier this year.
Oh, so they're still planning to, to, to complete the commercial portion then? That's great.
Yes, they have to, and if for some reason this owner did not want to proceed, she, Essex was prepared to build the, the commercial.
Okay.
Yes.
And, um, a couple more quick. So, um, since the, the residential portion was built, um, that satisfies like our requirement, so the, the, the entitlement is not going to expire anytime soon, because they've already built probably half of the property, is that right?
Yes, because they've already built fifty percent of it, they, they're already vested. But of course, we want them to, but they're obligated to build the commercial. So if for some reason, yeah.
There's no time limit, okay, that, which means the city cannot really do anything to force them to build.
Yeah, not, not really, but, um, I mean, it, it is a, it is subject to, it's under one entitlement, so they have to build both portions. But I know that Essex is prepared to move ahead if, for some reason, there was, um, some other situation that would prevent the current owner from moving ahead with that project. But as far as I know, there is not any, there's not any constraint.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I guess there's some requirement to prevent like left turn from, onto Halford, and, um, there's another requirement to, uh, keep the lighting in the back of the property from, uh, the, the lighting has to be covered. Those are some of the requirements. So, um, if the neighbors, um, don't feel that those requirements are being met, what can they do to address the, their concerns? Should they contact the city?
They, they would refer those to me, and I actually have been, I have met with the HOA with the project manager for Essex, so we've actually attended, so, yeah, they would just refer those to me, so I would address those with the project management team.
Okay, is, is it okay to give your email to this, this resident?
Yes, of, yes, of course.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it, that's it, thank you very much.
Once again, I'm talking to mute. Um, okay, is there any other commissioners with items to discuss under this? Hearing none, uh, I guess we can move on to Commissioner Travel and Training Reports. Got some things to say, and I'll let others speak first. Go ahead, Commissioner Chiracurro.
I just wanted to report out, and I, I didn't realize that, uh, it was, you know, challenging, but the NZ twenty conference, um, thank you, uh, Commissioner Jane, uh, it was a pretty enlightening conference to me. It was one of the first digital, of course, that I attended, but it was, um, a good insight into some of the projects that are happening very close to town. I was very interested in the, uh, all-electric building... I was very interested in the all-electric building, Adobe North, as it's called in San Jose, downtown San Jose. It's one of the seven buildings that changed the skyline of San Jose or to be changing the skyline, but all-electric, 650,000, one of the first in the area or region. And of course, they didn't share the cost of it, but I think it's going to be a trendsetter, but also sets in motion the urgency and the, you know, the rapidity, if that's the word, of change that's occurring and how Title 24 is not caught up, especially in the data related to some of these building code changes. So, it was an interesting conference. I did take a lot of notes, mostly screenshots, but it was a very good insight into sustainability goals. I think, you know, to have more people be aware and the educational component of it is far more critical now than ever with the fires, with the electric grids, with the water drought situation that's going to come looming large right after all the trees are gone and with the sea level rises. So, thanks SUDs for recommending that conference.
Okay, I'll let Commissioner Jane go, and then we'll go down the line.
Okay, yeah, I enjoyed the conference. I'm just going to give you a very brief takeaway. One of the sessions that I attended was, is coronavirus going to torpedo our cities, our sustainability, our public transit, and so on? Everyone is like fleeing New York City because it's too crowded there. The interesting quote that I saw was that a problem with coronavirus is overcrowding, not density. So, right now, because we have a shortage of housing, we have multiple families living in the same housing unit, and that's where the COVID is spreading. So, if we actually had more dense housing where everyone had their own apartment, it would actually help the situation. Then the other takeaway is that, you know, cities aren't going to go away. Metropolitan areas currently make up 92% of real GDP. And then the last thing is, you know, we need outdoor space for coronavirus. And the median for cities in the U.S. is 6.6 acres per thousand residents of parkland. L.A. has 3.3 acres per thousand of parkland. Santa Clara only has 2.53. So, we are actually way behind the average. So, we need to make sure that we're preserving our parkland so that people can recreate socially distant. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Biagini?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, my dog is acting up a little. First off, I do want to thank Commissioner Jane because I think the conference was worthwhile. The problem was the passable platform. It was horrendous getting in, and I initially thought it was the operator, me, until I talked live to somebody an hour after it started and found out it was on their end. So, that was very annoying to me. What I did and what I was able to get into, by the way, Commissioner Jane, yes, I noted that parkland issue too. But there was one piece that I'll speak up on, and that was a lightning round where they went through all these upcoming ideas, and I thought that was very intriguing. Some ideas definitely worthwhile. You got to vote on which one you thought was the best. Some of them I saw problems with, but it was good to know what's on deck for more ideas in terms of cities and planning and the rest. I understand, although I was frankly so turned off at the difficulties, I kept getting bounced out and the rest. I understand I can go back now and review all of the elements, so that's what I plan to do over the next several days is actually listen in, not just on the ones I got bounced out of, but the ones that I didn't choose. So, I'm hoping I don't run into the same problem. But I do want to thank you, Commissioner Jane. I thought it was a worthwhile conference. It was just so wonky. It was annoying, and from what I understood from the woman who helped me through, a huge percentage of people were likewise having problems. Thank you.
Okay, so actually, I was next, and then we'll wrap up with Commissioner Ikizzi. I had the same issues, I think unfortunately, that Commissioner Biagini did. I basically got into the conference two hours after it started due to some technical problems on their side. But once that was resolved, I was able to hear some interesting things, and it's actually a two-day conference. It became a three-day conference because going back and catching up on the things that you missed is worth doing, and you have to do it in real time. It's not something you can skip through. I think I was disappointed a little bit at the thinness of the conference in the sense that it was very much preaching to acquire rather than hitting with hard data and real solid feedback about example cities and things. Example buildings were very good. I thought that was awesome. And the lightning round, again, that was also quite entertaining and enlightening as to the kinds of products that people are producing for green city environments. The robotic lawn mowers didn't do well. It was kind of an out-of-the-place suggestion. Yeah, that was a little odd one. The reflective pavement and things though were very cool as for the sightings. We should actually maybe have a little bit of a better report card on the conference, but also a report feedback from the people who attended various things that they could maybe share together and put together into a little thing that could be read into the minutes for others to benefit from. Other than that, you know, it was a good try, and I hope that things get more...it gets smoother in the future, and we can actually take advantage of these remote conferences a little bit more as a group. Commissioner Ikizzi?
Yes, thank you very much for, Commissioner Jane, for telling us about the conference, and Elizabeth, thank you for signing all of us up, and I...it was a really good conference, and I couldn't believe how relevant all the topics are now after the big fire. So, thank you.
Okay. Is there any requests for training or anything else on that particular item? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to Planning Commission budget updates.
Thank you. Chair Salim, members of the commission, as all of you know, the city's facing significant financial hardships due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and so as a result of that, there's been a number of budget cuts requested from each of the departments, and the Planning Commission budget was also considered along with other boards and commissions. And so, the current budget was reduced from the allocated rate from the previous year of 28,200. It was reduced by $16,000...I'm sorry, $12,200, and so there's a total of $16,000 minus expenditures. And so, your current balance until the end of June of next year is $15,202.
I just want to provide a slight correction to that, Ms. Har. The item, the proposed reduction will actually go in front of the city council on September 29th. So, the action hasn't been reduced yet, but it's, you know, just one line item out of many line items related to city budget reductions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bria. So, you have your updated budget report just showing that with that reduction, likely it's going to be approved, then this would be your net balance.
Okay. I'd like to actually thank staff and Elizabeth for getting us our new iPads even under these harsh, hard financial conditions. It's been an amazing piece of technology, much more than I expected. I think we'll continue some conversation around getting a charger adapter that works in the council chambers and other places, but we can deal with that later. It's a very small expenditure when we start moving back to having in-chamber sessions.
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Biagini.
That's okay. So, I have a question because I'm concerned. I think we have to really watch what we do, obviously, because I know the city's hurting, thank you, COVID. But since this budget applies until next June, and I wasn't real clear on that, now I am, that makes me nervous about the upcoming Planning Commissioner Academy that's in March. So, it was so beneficial to me that it is something I would like to attend again, but let me just say this, I'm willing to do whatever it takes to mitigate any expenses, but recognizing that our budget has gone down, I just wanted to raise that issue now. That is something I would like to attend. I wish we all could. So, there you have it. We'll see where it goes, I suppose. The only place, by the way, where it's listed is if you go on the League of Cities website and you search for 2021 Planning Commissioner Academy, that's where you simply see the announcement that it's March 24th to 26th in Garden Grove, California, but no other further information. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe if we all pressured a little bit to have them provide a virtual option, that would make things a lot easier because it would save on travel and motel and all the other parts of that.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, and I'm kind of betting that being that it's in March, that's probably what it will be. So, that would update it legislative and the like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other budget-related items? Nope. Okay, moving on, upcoming agenda items?
Rena, do you have updates?
Yeah. So, at our next Planning Commission meeting on October 14th, we will be providing a second study session for the Planning Commission on the Climate Action Plan, providing some additional information as well as an opportunity for you to discuss and provide some more feedback. Also at that meeting, we do have an appeal of a single-family home that went to our development review hearing, likely a potential zoning code amendment related to a definition that would be brought forward, and I believe that's it for the 14th. On the 28th, we do intend to bring forward a study session on the Patrick Henry Drive specific plan to get the Planning Commission caught up on really the scope of the project.
Okay. Is there any point in the near future we're going to talk about the results of the conversation around Planning Commission changes to agendas and so forth?
Yes, on our report of council actions, we'll have just a brief commentary, and then Rena will elaborate on that.
Okay, let's move on then.
Excuse me, Chair Salim, there was one item. It should be up on the screen. It was on the agenda, allocating funds to purchase headsets.
No, I didn't notice that. I didn't see it.
Oh, it's under the Planning Commission budget updates. It's a subheading.
Oh, okay.
So, do you want to explain that, please?
The quality of the audio for the Zoom meetings seems to be greatly enhanced when headsets are used. We have quite a few in the office. Costs could be anywhere from keeping it on the low side, anywhere from maybe $40, $50, even a little bit less for a good-quality headset. So, we wanted to find out if there were commissioners that did not have headsets available, if they would like to get them, and if the commission would like to allocate funds to have these purchased.
Okay, if commissioners don't have a headset and need one, they should probably raise their hand. That might make it easier for staff to track.
And raise. Here's Nancy.
Just, sorry, we're sort of having a sidebar here with a technology expert who's going to help us implement any new device, and it sounds like we might need to get wireless headsets, and that might be some added cost because they would be wireless to be compatible with the iPads.
Is there any idea what that increase might be? Okay, so Derek, our IT person is mentioning about $150 a person. And how many hands were indicated? Does anyone see how many would need a headset?
We have three hands, Commissioner Biagini, Commissioner Harrow, and Commissioner Becker.
So, is that four?
Three.
So, that's about six.
Could you please repeat who this is, who would like headsets?
Commissioner Biagini, because unfortunately, I don't have a wireless headset. Otherwise, I wouldn't care.
And then Commissioner Hero, Commissioner Becker, and Commissioner Chirakuru. They all have their hands raised, I think, to indicate they would like a headset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so far, I'm using my laptop with my own headset, so I don't see a need to spend money yet.
Your sound quality is excellent, Chair Salim.
Yeah.
Obviously, mine isn't. Biagini.
Yeah, headsets are awesome. They avoid the echo back and cycling and a lot of other problems that create bad audio, so it's a good expenditure.
So, could we give a range of up to $1,000? Would that be acceptable? Or if they're $150, that's 600 right there, but that's a Derek indicated. That's on the low end. But we'll do our best to find something as economically sensitive as possible.
I'll work with IT to find a good cost. So, are we going to allocate funds? We'd have to have a motion.
So, I make a motion to allocate 1,200 just in case I need extra needs.
So, I would like to actually trade a headset for a power adapter cable for $14. I don't think that's going to break our bank, but hopefully that would be...that's something that's far more useful to me for that lap...for the iPad.
Okay. So, the maker of the motion, can you include that cable as well as the headsets in that expenditure?
Yes, absolutely, and this is...
So, the motion was made by Commissioner Becker. It was seconded by?
Commissioner Jane.
And this is...could you please repeat the motion? Is it to allocate 1,200 towards purchase of wireless headsets?
And a cable for Chair Salim.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take the vote. Commissioner Ikizzi?
Aye.
Commissioner Jane?
Yes.
Chair Salim?
Yes.
Commissioner Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Biagini?
Yes.
Commissioner Chirakuru?
Yes.
Commissioner Hero?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes.
Interesting that the motion looks like it's all for me. I get all the headsets and the cable.
You're the chair.
Yeah.
Christmas is around the corner.
All right, thank you for that vote. We'll get on that. Hopefully, we'll have this before the next meeting, hopefully.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, I guess we're on to city council actions, so we can talk about the other items on there.
Yes. Chair Salim, members of the commission, so there's been one meeting since your last hearing, and that was on September 1st, and there were a few items of interest in association with actions taken by the Planning Commission. On the consent calendar, there was an affordable housing agreement that was approved for the below-market-rate homes within the 58-unit townhome project at 2780 El Camino, and that's the former Moonlight Lanes project site. There was also an affordable housing agreement for one below-market-rate purchase with a 12-unit townhome project at 1900 Warburton, and that's just down the street from us here at City Hall. Then there was also a development agreement with Monroe Housing Partners LP for the development of 65 housing units at 2330 Monroe Street. That's the Free Bird proposal on a city-owned property. That's all affordable housing units. And it was also recognition of the developers... it was also recognition of the, the developer's contribution of over five million dollars and establishment of a loan for that project. Also, on the consent calendar, there was the Planning Commission minutes of, uh, February twenty-sixth and April eighth, and that was approved six-zero. And then the discussion did come up about the, um, the workload or the work plan issues and the amendment to the Planning Commission's policies and procedures. So that, uh, because of those other items about placing items on the agenda, that was, uh, deferred for further discussion. And I'll have, um, Ms. Brio bring you up to date on what those comments were and the follow-up action on that item. I'll just finish up with the rest of the, this agenda that pertains to the Planning Commission. I believe then there was just discussion on, discussion and direction on the possible relocation of the Santa Clara County Courthouse, located at ten ninety-five Homestead Road, and including authorizing discussions with, uh, the State of California Judicial Council. So that was part of this downtown-specific plan and the reclaiming the downtown effort. So that, that process has, was discussed as well. So I'll turn this over to Ms. Brio to discuss the, um, process for the agenda items and the Planning Commission work plan.
Thank you. So, um, the Governance Committee met on, um, the fourteenth of this month, and, um, that meeting, um, the agenda and information to attend, I think, was sent to many of you. Um, I'm hoping some of you participated by listening in or hearing the recording. I know, um, Commissioner Jane participated in the meeting. Uh, the substance of the meeting and the subject, among many things, um, included sort of the Governance Committee's review specifically of the new added agenda, um, I'm sorry, the new added policy and procedure for the Planning Commission to request items to be agend- agendized for future meetings. And so, um, the, the purpose behind this was really to help staff understand the process, because, um, it does involve something about relit, resource allocation to the city, as well as policy direction and initiation of work. So, um, this was looked at from just the particulars of the Planning Commission's policy and procedures, but also in terms of giving guidance to all boards and commissions on how to actually bring forward items that these commissions would like to have as part of their work plans. Different commissions have, um, different charges, and so their work plans could be quite different, but, um, it would allow really for a uniform process. And the outcome of the meeting was for the city ca- for the committee members who participated to, um, to give feedback that they liked the idea of having a process that involved having, um, work plans, um, brought forward to, from boards and commissions, to the city council's priority-setting meetings, which are held in January of the year. So, um, the work plan would be something that would get discussed, really at the end of the year, so that time's upon us very shortly. Um, and I'm putting together sort of the, um, the work plan related to the items that we know that the Planning Commission will be taking on, um, next year. And then we'll request the Planning Commission to, um, you know, amend that work plan with, um, a couple more items that they would like the city council to determine, to either be in alignment of their policy direction and/or also supportive of the resource allocation needed to make those, um, you know, other particular work plan items happen. So the process would be toward the end of the year, and this is applicable for all boards and commissions, that that would, um, go forward to these pla- um, a work plan, a draft work plan would be brought forward. Um, the Planning Commission can amend it by adding additional items, and that that would then go to the city council at the beginning of the year for them to weigh yea or nay. Um, and they would get some more information in terms of, you know, how much would that take in terms of staff resources to make happen. So this is, um, something that the Governance Committee has recommended as a process, and I believe the city council on the twenty-ninth will take action on whether or not to implement that process or not. And, I'm sorry, that means the September twenty-ninth meeting. And that's what I have in terms of providing an update on the Governance Committee meeting.
Okay. It feels a little concerning that it would only be once a year. It'd need to have more frequent, uh, reviews, uh, for us to be able to be dynamic and responsive. Um, I think as far as City Council Actions, we can add one more little item. I think Commissioner Becker had his hand up. Let's go ahead and let him speak.
Yeah, and that's, uh, basically a, thank you, Chair. Um, that's about the, uh, governance. Um, I watched it, and I heard some of the things that were said. Um, as a Planning Commissioner, since I, from what I used to watch, before I was on the Planning Commission, there was a lot of, um, we had more power, I feel. And now I think with a lot of these certain moves by certain members of our city council, it just seems too political. And I think that's a little unfair, especially from what all of us commissioners do, no matter what side we fall on. Uh, we work really hard, and, uh, I've heard some really, some of the comments recently about some of us and about what we do here on the Planning Commission, and how we try to invite, um, certain people here to speak to us, to enlighten us a little more, educate us a little more, because we really want to do the best job we can as Planning Commissioners. Um, and I just think it's really insulting, especially that those people don't speak to us directly. They speak to us where we can't respond. And hearing what a lot of, going on with the governance, you know, no offense to staff, I really appreciate everything our staff does, but at the same time, we're making decisions for the city of Santa Clara. We're making decisions for our community. And, you know, I'm not saying that staff doesn't care about that, but, you know, sometimes we all have to dedicate our time to these things. And I, myself, and I think a lot of other, my fellow commissioners, really do enjoy these educating, um, study sessions that we get, uh, coming up with new solutions. And when I hear certain council members talk about tying our hands, it's not fair. And that's not democratic. That is, that's backwards to democratic. And I don't know how my other Planning Commissioners feel about this, but I just feel very insulted that the work that we do here is just sometimes taken very, not lightly, a- a- and, and I think it's just too political. So I hope that, you know, we can move forward and we can still do what we do here on the Planning Commission, because I think we have a great family here. We disagree with each other once in a while, but, you know, we could still go out and have a metaphorical beer or coffee with each other and get along. And I think that's something that we need to continue in this city, through our commissions, our city council, and throughout our entire, you know, community, like I said. So, thank you.
Okay, let's move to Commissioner Jane.
I certainly, okay, I certainly understand our budget constraints and, and the limitations about adding burden to staff, but, um, I just went and looked up a Brown Act document from a company called bbklaw.com, and what it says is, "The legislative body may itself as a body, subject to the rules and procedures of the legislative body, take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda." So what is a legislative body? And here's what it says. "The requirement of the Brown Act to apply to legislative bodies of local government agencies. The term legislative body is defined to include the governor bo- governing body of a local agency. Example, the city council and any commission, committee, board, or other body of the local agency, whether permanent or temporary, decision-making or advisory, that is created by a formal action of the, of a legislative body." So we are a legislative body, and according to the Brown Act, we apparently may take action to direct staff to place matter of business on a future agenda. Uh, I guess the council will determine whether that is, uh, valid or not. Thank you.
So the last item is adjournment on the agenda, unless there's further commentary by the Planning Commission. And just to note, our next meeting is October fourteenth, so, and it is a, gonna be a fairly packed agenda.
Move to adjourn?
Maybe, oh.
Second.
So that was Commissioner Jane that moved to adjourn, and Commissioner Biagini, second?
Yes.
We do not have to do a formal vote. Does everyone, uh, agree to adjourn?
Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
All those opposed?
Thank you all.
Anyone opposed?
All right, so that motion passes.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.